Thank you.
And it's clear and they know what's happening.
There it is.
That's where it's usually like the sticky piece.
Welcome back.
Alder Bernstein, can you hear us okay?
I don't think I can.
Oops.
Oh, I'm sure.
Both these guys are here.
That's awesome.
Are they like the snapping on the thing?
Yeah. Some friends of mine had them and they look better on me because I had the right colors.
They're matching.
It's too bad that you didn't glow. The lights of the town are too bright.
I did.
They like not to. Alder Bernstein, can you hear us?
Yes, sir.
All right, we can too. Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
I think we're good to go.
Good to go. I'd like to call the meeting to order of the City of Manona City Council Monday, July 7th. Could you please call the roll?
Alder Radamacher? Here. Alder Homquist?
Here.
Alder Wood?
Here.
Alder DePula?
Here.
Alder Kugel?
Here.
Alder Bernstein?
Here.
Mayor Moore?
Here. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
There are no minutes.
Sorry. Okay, then it appears that there are no appearances either. There's no one on the screen or in the room. And so we'll go to, and then there is no public hearing, there's no consent agenda. We are now at G1 unfinished business. 1A consideration of resolution 25-6-2813 approving the sanitary sewer rate increase from the Public Works Committee.
Move approval.
Second.
We have approval in a second, okay. Any other questions? Any changes, Mark, for the last?
No. No changes.
No changes. Any questions? Yeah.
Mine is really for the public advantage. Neil, you might be best prepared. Further information that was shared regarding MMSD that was shared with the council of like, is there a way to provide maybe just a brief summary of the most salient pieces from that for anybody that watches in the future?
Yeah, absolutely. So just for clarification, I think for anyone watching this either recorded or live, there is a great explanation of MMSD's charges. It gives a little better understanding of it. It's still not quite like walk it all the way through so you can calculate your own bill, but it does give some of the highlights of how they calculate it. Would be happy to share that on Facebook as well as on the city website.
But it's not yet on the city website, correct?
No, I don't believe so.
So if anyone goes looking for it, okay, great.
We'll have it up for tomorrow morning.
Perfect. Great.
Along those lines, I thought there was some talk of having the representatives of the Sewer District come here.
Yeah, I think with the holidays, I don't know, Mark, if you had any conversations.
No, I did talk to them. There's somebody will be available. I just told them not to come tonight for this meeting. So whenever you can get that date set up, they're willing to come.
Great, thank you. Any other questions, comments? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
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 The resolution passes. City Council item, action item unfinished business 1B consideration of ordinance 6-25-790 amending chapter 381-3H and 3 at 1-4J3 regarding lawn and yard waste disposal from the Public Works Committee.
Move approval.
And I, do I have a second?
I'll second.
And I have a second. Any questions, comments, changes on this particular item?
I guess I'll just make a comment that because we did receive some questions from at least one citizen, the only change to this ordinance is the clarification of language that states who is eligible to use the Manona facility, which would be City of Manona residents only.
Correct. And city residents only and not?
Businesses and landscape companies, exactly.
Right.
Yeah.
Correct. Okay. Any other comments, questions? All those in favor say aye.
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 It's an ordinance.
Oh, sorry. Sorry, it's an ordinance, I apologize. Could you please take the roll?
Alder Homquist?
Aye.
Alder Wood?
Aye.
Alder DePula?
Aye.
Alder Kugel?
Aye.
Alder Bernstein?
Aye.
Alder Radamacher?
Aye.
Okay. Terrific. Ordinance changed, passes. We'll move to G2 new business. 2A consideration of resolution 25-7-2816 amending tax increment district number 10 brought forward by the Community Development Authority.
I guess I can take that one, Mayor. I think maybe we might have missed getting our consultant, although we moved the meeting time to 6:00 PM tonight, I think. So, yeah, I can briefly just go over those here. Hold on, bring those up. Yeah, each of these districts, again, has been just some minor boundary changes. One, I think, believe the one for, I think it's 10, our Topgolf one, if I have the right.
No, 10 is Gordon.
10 is Gordon, okay. That was just the Topgolf Tiff district is specifically related because the parcel boundaries were changed with the CSMs that were recently approved. So we simply need to amend the boundary to match that particular boundary change. So that's the primary change there. The other two, Mark, I don't know, was there a situation you know of in terms of the evaluation, making sure we had further, just our limits, statutory limits or?
10 is Bloom district and it was basically added parcels so they can do the other BMO Harris area. So that was a boundary amendment for that.
Correct. Okay.
Yeah, that's on page, page 16, or page 16 of that shows the, shows the addition on that, so.
Right.
There.
Okay, and that was 10. And then item 2B was consideration of resolution 25-7-2817 amending the tax increment district number 13.
That is Pirate Island. So Pirate Island is the same thing. There's not a project, but there was two parcels. Originally, when they went to the DOR, they had to take these two parcels out. Now we have enough capacity to put them back in, so let's just put these two parcels back in at least.
Okay, and?
Mayor, I was just curious, can you explain why we could not include them earlier, but now we can?
There was a 12% limit, so when they actually went to the DOR in December of last year, early January, they said we were over a 10% limit.
12.
12%. Yeah, 12%. That's a strict limit, so we were over that, so we had to deduct two of the parcels out.
12% of the total?
Equalized value.
Equalized value.
And now with the new numbers and these two parcels, it would be less than 12%. So that's the same with 10.
It's the same with all three.
That's the reason with all of them, right?
Yeah.
Well, no, 10 is really, is the BMO, the second BMO location project.
Right. Okay. And item 2C consideration of resolution 25-7-2818 amending tax increment district number 15, which is?
That's Topgolf.
That's the Topgolf.
So that was a little bit, so we had a, we filed ours with the state, the boundaries and everything, I remember that's right. And then the CSM was filed, Dorn, and they didn't match up, so they had to go basically revise the boundaries and that's the 99% of this reason why they're changing it, so.
Since more, this one especially primarily just administrative change, so the boundaries match.
Well, they had, because the CSM wasn't matching, so.
Right.
This one included two new properties, though.
It did include two new properties.
It includes now the central building of WPS and it includes, on your paper, the very top left parcel back in.
Right. Okay, and then the, before we move beyond the task, these tax increment districts, do we, do anybody have any question on any of the three of these? Again, this is just a first read tonight. Any other questions, comments?
I do.
Okay. Which one?
TID number 10.
Yeah.
I noticed the increased value of the addition is projected to be 30 million and that seems to be a lot considering that a block and a half in the Bloom was 37 million. But, so I'm kind of curious how that gets calculated. And then with affordable housing, there's 3.9 million projected for that to be available and, again, I'm wondering how that figure was calculated. And property 19, belonging to the Irving's that faces Gordon, I'm wondering if they were notified of being included in this TID. I didn't see mention of that in the document. And I also wondered if the owners of 6411 and 6413 in TID number 13, if they were notified. Since it's not blighted, but I don't know if it's required that we send them a notification, but I wondered if we could or should.
Yeah, I think, I don't think there's actually a requirement that they're notified, Alder, but I think certainly letting them know was certainly not a problem. And they may have done that, I mean, Director Palmer may have done that already.
He's already done it.
They were notified. CD had a public hearing on them.
Okay. So they did, so those properties did get a direct mailing then?
Yes.
Okay, so they're.
They did? Okay, I just didn't see it in the document. But with those costs, the 30 and million and the 3.9 million, I'm hoping, I guess I'm going to seek some additional information before we vote on it. So I don't know if there's an answer currently, but I'm going to look into it.
I don't have in front of me, is the 30 million added values after asking about?
Yeah, plus the 3.9 million.
So 30 million I assume is based on their calculation, the Bloom, I believe, was 28 million. So I assume they're thinking this is going to be some type of similar project, but I'm not, I'm not for sure, but I assume that's what it is. It's going to be some type of project fairly similar to that.
Well, I, when the 3.9 affordable housing, I know that was included in the Bloom project, but it seems like with the Pirate Island project, TID 13, there's also an affordable housing component. Am I wrong?
No, I think it probably is a standard item, Alder, that they reinserted in all the project plans at this point. The budget's essentially, at this point, there are not specific projects identified for those projects. They are an estimate based on other activity within those districts. So it could come in at 1 million, it could come in at 6 million, but we have to plan for an operating based on, without having a project in hand, we are using that as a budget number and then would be basically revising that and presenting that to council if and when a project comes in that needs that cost. So we're making sure it's entered into the project plan as an eligible cost, so council has the ability then to actually act on it under the existing project plan.
Okay. So that's just an estimate kind of placeholder, if you will?
Correct.
Okay.
And that's usually those would tie back, Alder, to a specific development agreement where that would come through CDA and then come to council, till you actually get the hard and fast number. That's, that's when that would come into play.
But the TID has to have a certain incremental increase to be able to support that, correct?
Correct. And that's also an estimate at this point, without having a project in hand.
Okay.
So the consultant prepares those estimates using those numbers in terms of both revenue and expenses to present a cash flow that actually works in the project plan.
Okay.
So if it varies, if it, yep, if it varies from those numbers, obviously, we would need to recalculate that and make sure that it's still cash flows.
All right.
And that would also be the case for the affordable housing number. It just simply says that if a developer was interested in affordable housing component, again, that would be a placeholder estimate. Doesn't require that a development has affordable housing. It just means that we are open to that and the CDA is open to that and it's a possibility.
Correct, Mayor.
I would say that affordable housing too is also part of the project plan is within a half mile. It can used to be like a Renew Manona type project. I know they haven't, CDA hasn't looked into that, but that would be something for the future. So it's money actually, it's also for affordable housing projects around that area within the half mile.
Correct. Right.
Oh, yeah, that's interesting with Renew Manona. I wondered if that was applicable and who decides how and if that is possible through the Renew Manona program to help with affordable housing that way with smaller projects within the half mile radius?
Well, the new Renew Manona program is administered through the CDA and so it would be up to the CDA to bring forward something that may or may not connect to Renew Manona. I mean, the way the Renew Manona is currently structured, it's not structured to build a whole facility. It instead supports individual projects to, for essentially upgrades to residential homes in Manona. But the CDA is also looking at revisions to the Renew Manona program currently or certainly sometime in the near future to improve that program and hopefully make it a little more impactful than, than, or, you know, overall a little more impactful because its use has been, been successful, but we think that there's ways in which it can be adjusted. So that'll be something that the CDA will be discussing and making recommendations towards.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yep.
Yeah.
Just a couple things. TID district 13 is sole purpose is to, well, it's two purposes. Its main purpose is to rehabilitate and conserve the housing that's already there on Pirate Island and then there's also like three parcels that could be redeveloped. So that is, the whole thing is, 80% of it is affordable housing, basically.
That's right.
And then the other thing, point is for all three of these, we've already approved these districts, we're just looking at amendments.
Correct. Correct. Yeah.
I think I understand that. Thank you.
Yeah. Teresa.
I do appreciate the question Alder Bernstein raised about notifying the residents that find their home within this new boundary and I just, for my own clarification, I think you said that they were already notified.
Double check with Doug. I know, I can't remember what they said at the CDA, I thought he did.
Yeah.
If there was a public hearing, most likely they were all properties in the district, but we will confirm that, though.
Thank you.
Yeah, when, when the CDA takes these up for consideration, they, they have to have a public hearing?
Yeah.
They're not allowed to do it privately, so, yeah.
And so the homeowner would be notified of the hearing? Yeah.
And the feedback you had, I remember from the TIP 10 was they were all, everything was okay.
Sure.
Any other comments, questions? Okay, so these three obviously will be coming back.
And we leave, Mr. Stolper, in our, someone will be available for the second read, so. I just got it up from Katrina. So, yeah.
Yeah.
So I just saw you guys move me, so that was my fault, sorry.
Yeah. Okay, so with that, we'll go to number two. Thank you, Mark. Go to number 2D consideration of ordinance 7-25-791 amending section 335-3 of the Manona Code of Ordinances regarding firearm discharges put forward by the Public Safety Committee.
I can take that, Mayor. I think the chief was, chief might have gotten, taken by another call at this point, I think, I have a feeling so. Just in, in brief, essentially our, the way our current ordinance was written, the discharge of ceremonial firearms such as for military or police personnel at a funeral was technically not allowed by our ordinance. I think the chief, you know, essentially when someone would ask him, he would inform them that it technically was not allowed, but pretty much gave a very clear impression that we were not enforcing that. So this is essentially clearing, cleaning that to make sure that those types of uses are permitted under our ordinance, so.
Any questions? Yeah, Doug.
Comment. I, I think that's, you know, fine to, to give the chief authority to, for those kind of ceremonial discharges, but that, the language that's proposed actually goes way, goes beyond that to just allow him to authorize it at any time. So I think it needs some guardrails before, before I'd want to support it. Yeah, because, I mean, it could just say, we could state that purpose in there or some other language, but it's pretty cut lunch right now.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? Issues at this time? Okay. Again, those will be coming back. Next meeting. Takes us to H, reports from committees, commissions, boards, mayor, city administrator, city attorney, department manager, sustainability efforts, diversity effort, and inclusion efforts. I'm going to start down at this end. Rachel, do you have anything?
All right. Public safety met last week, so obviously we talked through what we just read and then we did a preliminary read of the capital budget. So, yeah, it was pretty straightforward, just mainly scheduled upgrades to equipment.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Patrick?
No report.
Okay. Doug?
Landmarks met on June 26th, a special meeting just to consider proposal for a sign attached to the Allen's house and was turned down by the landmarks committee. They were encouraged to find either a location not quite so prominent and, or if it was postbound, it landmarks commission wouldn't have anything to say about it, so.
Okay.
They said Tony Gomez Phelps was there and seemed receptive to that.
Okay.
That's it. License of view meets tomorrow. And that's it.
Okay, great. Thank you. Brian?
ZBA will not be meeting in July, will be meeting in August. Applicant wasn't ready for that meeting. Plan Commission meets on Monday, a week from today, and then that's it.
Teresa?
Sustainability was, our July meeting was canceled with written reports being exchanged instead and transit also canceled, but interesting stuff going on there. The Transit Commission members wanted to make sure that they were considering the needs of our seniors and our business community, so we've made some introductions with Christine at Mezba and one of our commission members and then Diane at the Senior Center with one of our commission members with the idea that they would meet and listen and understand whether there are some things there that we should look into. Also, there were some questions from Madison Metro we were waiting on and we just thought, let's just wait until we've got all the answers from them. But in case anyone has not seen the Facebook post, I know that went out, that you can now get on Metro with a credit card, which is kind of exciting. Community Media will be meeting this Thursday, will start to look at budget and wanted to defer to the chair of Public Works, but I guess I'll just say that I have met with, and Brian as well has, have met with a couple residents who had some questions about some work going on. And I'll leave it at that.
Okay, just to clarify, my understanding with the credit cards is that it would not apply if you have special permission or whatever you would call it, as a senior, or special rates, as a senior low-income individual or student. It would only apply if it was regular race. Is that correct?
I'm not, I'm not sure if the reader has a way of differentiating or not, but I will.
Exactly, and that's why they were, and I believe that's why Mick said that they, that they couldn't use a credit card because there would be no way for the bus driver to be checking every person.
So for standard fares, you can swipe.
So it's standard fares for credit card jobs.
Yeah, that makes perfect sense.
Yeah. And when was, has, has Metro been responsive to getting still monthly benefits?
They have been very responsive. It was just a matter of me asking late with, they didn't really have enough, we got the answers today, but we still, we still thought, plus we're looking for a couple commission members, so we just were thinking it was probably best just to push off them.
Yeah, I just didn't know if we had numbers for the last couple of months, because I don't think we've.
One thing that was interesting is that we noticed a slump in the ridership throughout the summer months and the question was, is that just something that happens system-wide in the summertime because people are riding their bicycles more? Or is it something specific to Manona? Those were some of the questions we had. We also wanted to know about the stops that are now considered part of the Manona, you know, stops collection, but yet they were always, they were always a stop before we joined in. And we were thinking that we would see changes in those numbers because now people have more options, so they don't need to funnel into those, those fewer stops, but, you know, there were just some questions. So it's just, the commission is really doing a great job at looking at some of the data from Metro and coming up with, trying to make stories out of the data and understand why people are taking it, at what times, where are their destinations, are they going downtown? Are they going to work? And trying to understand that a little better. Yeah. There doesn't seem to be a strong understanding of the, we can get statistics for when people get on the bus, but not when they get off, as you know, so that's kind of harder to put the story together. And then we were also trying to understand whether the stop at Cold Springs, which would be associated to the high school, whether that was seeing a bump in ridership, but it's kind of too, you know, too close to the end of the year. But anyone with high school kids knows that it might be easy to get to high school, get to the school, but then there's always something going on after school. It's almost impossible. It's almost impossible, you know, you, you almost, you need a ride to your next obligation after classes get out.
Rick, do you have anything?
Yeah, just one quick note. The senior commission met, and they reviewed their capital budget proposal. That was the first read. Will look at it again next month and vote on it, and then the operating budget will also be introduced that month. And that's my report.
Okay. Thank you. Ali, no report. Neil?
Just, I would guess, kind of quick, take the chief's turn, but since he's not here tonight. Just a quick, least preliminary reports from the community festival were very positive. I think we didn't have really hardly any incidents, everything went very smoothly, weather cooperated. All in all, did very well. I think we had, I think the one grand experiment for this, this last one was certainly the, the implementation of the parking plan for downtown. All reports seem to be that, that did certainly help with, not only, I think we had Lieutenant Nakrira actually driving around about 20 minutes before the fireworks, making sure that all the routes were clear and a vehicle could actually get through. So we actually did some follow-up to make sure that the parking actually worked and served the purpose we needed to, which was making sure we had emergency access at the, probably the busiest time of the event. So all along, viewing that as, as a tremendous success, and probably something we're going to be looking to continue going forward. Beyond that, I know I certainly, you know, want to express our gratitude to the organizers and, and all the volunteers who put in a lot of work in, in some, some nice balmy, humid conditions for a while. So it was probably a, a great, especially for Alder, pulling those guys cooking food, I'm sure it was really fun in that weather, too. So it was, it was, it was warm. So, but all in that, I think we had some, you know, minor heat-related responses by our fire department, but nothing, nothing critical. So all in all, we're, we're least preliminary indications are that it was a tremendous success. You know, I think, I know, certainly, Brian Henry and, and his team and the board put a lot of blood, sweat, and tears into making this happen. Think they realized how much work it really takes to put this kind of event on. Certainly looking forward to kind of regrouping with them after things are done to kind of talk about what went well and what we can maybe try to continue to make it better in the future, so. But all in all, a very successful event, so.
Nancy, would you mind if I jumped down on Neil's? Just to piggyback on the comments about the festival. I know that there was a, an email that came into our inboxes today that someone was not happy about the single-side parking. And I'm not making this up, that is the only comment I've heard against single-side parking. But I just do want to acknowledge that not everyone always feels the same way. But in all of my asking, all of my neighbors, everyone was so happy at the lack, that there was no congestion. It was easy to get in and out, it was safer, the neighborhoods were less hectic. The parks, or, excuse me, the event organizers had a shuttle that would get people to the front gate, you know? I mean, I drove it for a couple hours, if I saw someone with crutches, I would offer them a ride. I mean, it's, I love the single-side parking, a really great move by our fire and police.
Yeah, I would, I would certainly echo my gratitude as well for the community festival. And, and I actually didn't have to ask anybody what they thought, because I went to the, when I went to the grocery store on Saturday, I had four people, four different people come up to me, only one of which I knew, but they knew who I was, and they wanted to extend their thanks and praise about the festival as a whole, and also specifically mentioned about marking positively about the parking. And then the same thing happened at the, at the farmer's market yesterday, where I had mayor's hours, as I do once a month. People were very excited that it was back, and back in a big way, and appreciated the changes that were made. And I just have a couple of other things here. Tomorrow night, weather permitting, is the first concert in the park put on by the Friends of the Senior Center. It's the Wanakee Big Band, that starts at 5:00 PM. Thursday night is the second Sphere Garden of the season, sponsored by Friends of Sendamiano at Sendamiano, also starting at 5:00 PM. And that's with the Progressive Lane All-Stars, which is to say it's, it includes, includes all Manona residents, starting with, with Bert Slendy on drums and Gordon. So, so that will, should be a great night up at Sendamiano. On Thursday as well, Thursday during the day, the three sculptures from the Gary Whiteworth Festival will be delivered and installed in the three locations in the city. The first location being Sendamiano, the second location being Grand Crossing Park, and the third location being just outside the library here, by the Perennial Garden. So we're excited to finally have them not only delivered but installed on Thursday. Would also like to mention that Java Abilities, which is a brand-new coffee shop in town that supports job development for differently-abled individuals, is open, and will have their official ribbon cutting on Friday at 11:00 AM, and then their grand opening on Saturday. They've already gotten multiple mentions on Facebook, including from Madison Foodie, who is raving about the food and the staff. So if you haven't checked out Java Abilities, feel free to, to, to stop by there. The drive-through is not open yet, but will be open very soon. And finally, I wanted to mention that we had a state budget for 2025 to 2027 passed on July 3. And following up on 2023 Wisconsin Act 12, this budget, which is by all means a compromise, but includes the first increase, the very first increase to shared revenue payments for cities and villages in over two decades. Just goes to show you how difficult it is to, to get shared revenue from the state. So, so that means an overall increase in state aid for local governments, including Manona. And a key component of that increased shared revenue comes from the sales tax increase. Cities and villages will see their sales tax increase 2.3 percent in 2025, followed by 3.4 percent next year in '26, and estimated 2.9 percent in 2027. So it directly benefits us by allowing us to receive a larger portion of the sales tax revenues. Unfortunately, because of our size, it's a pretty tiny bump, but it's an increase nonetheless at a time we were actually expecting in, in budget for a decrease, because just like the county, sales tax revenues generally have been going down since COVID. So, so I asked Mark to put together some figures today, and, and he said, like, for instance, in '25, the increase in that shared revenue from Manona is a little over 7,000, by '27, it's like 12,000. So like I said, it's a wee, it's a wee increase, but, you know, we have to celebrate small wins. It's not a decrease, yeah. Better, better a small win than no win at all, so. I think that's all I got. Do I have anybody else online? No, not seeing any other staff.
Just have appointments ahead there, that's it.
Yep, yep. So with that, we have letter number I, appointments to the Library Board effective immediately. Rosalyn Evil, Margaret Clark, and Christina Jones, all of which we believe are, are reappointments to the Library Board. So I'll take a motion to approve the appointments. Second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Appointments. Did you say aye or nay?
Me? I said aye.
Okay, sorry. Yeah, sounded like nay, too, so thank you for clarifying, right, right?
I think that happened last time, but no, it's aye.
Okay, terrific, thank you, appreciate it. And with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn.
I have a motion, and I have a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Alder.
Have a good evening.